Okay, it's being six o'clock. I'm going to call to order this March 24, 2025 meeting of the Select Board. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And just a couple of quick announcements. This meeting is being broadcast live by Chancetel Media and recorded for later viewing by the public. And you will note, Select Board Pat Maloney is joining us by Zoom. And with that, we're going to go to a joint meeting that the town moderator is going to chair. So, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson. Okay, so this is a joint meeting. I'm calling it to order between the Chelmsford Select Board and the Chelmsford School Committee. I will state for the record that there is a quorum. And we have two positions that have to be filled. One for a... Now we really have a quorum. One for a regular position on the Neshoba Valley Technical High School, School Committee, and one for the alternate. We'll start with the regular. I'll entertain a motion for candidate.
Pat Wojcisz.
Do I hear a second? Any other nominations? There being none? All in favor of closing the nominations?
Aye.
Okay. And now we'll take the nomination for the school alternate. Any nominations?
Jasmine Waddell.
Do I have a second for Dr. Waddell? Second? We'll close that. Are there any others, I guess? No. So now we'll close that. And let's just take a voice vote on the boards and the whole slate because there's only two candidates running for two positions.
Except we have one person joining remotely.
Oh. Okay. Well, we can't hear him?
If he speaks, he can hear.
Yeah, so he can speak up. So, all in favor of the slate of Pat Wojcisz and Dr. Waddell, please state aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? There being none. I will now adjourn this meeting. All in favor of adjourning? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And please, everybody, remember to vote next week. Thank you.
Okay. After that drama filled...
This is Alan George. I pull up the list, he's got everybody.
Okay. If the audience could please leave...
You need to turn that white dial up because they can't hear the microphones.
How's that?
For some reason, your voice isn't carrying.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Next up is public service announcements. Take those.
Oh, does Evelyn want to do hers?
Oh, right. Evelyn Thorin, do you want to make your announcement?
I'm sorry. Evelyn Thorin, I am the Chair of the Ats and Technology Education Fund Committee. It kind of dawned on me when I was doing this that this is the 29th year that I've been coming before this board to talk about the Ats and Technology Education Fund or to let people know that applications are available or to request, you know, donations or anything. So, George Ripsum stood before your board 29 years ago and proposed a bylaw, and your board supported that. It went to town meeting. It was voted in. It was initially Tony Volpe's idea, and he handed it over, and it's been going on ever since. We have a nine-member board. They're all wonderful people that you have appointed to that board, hard workers. We also have a presence on Facebook. On occasion, we do post some things, and whoever gets the application awards, we try to get their pictures up there and what it is that the money went for. The reason I'm here before the board currently is because the applications have been available. There's a week left for any of the teaching staff or the school council member or club leader to apply. Where do you find the applications? They're on the town website. The Director of Technology, Bill Silva, has sent out applications, and they have reminded everybody about that. We have specific criteria. It is not part of the school committee budget. It is to enhance and support the curriculum of the Chelmsford Public Schools. If there's anything that the money purchases, it becomes the property of the Chelmsford Public Schools because it is taxpayer money. If anybody wants to know how they can donate money, if you have a pay taxes, you have a tear-off on your tax bill. If you have an excise tax bill, you have a tear-off on that also. And if you don't do any of those, then you can always make a donation to the town treasurer to make a check out to the Town of Chelmsford for whatever amount and notate that it's for the Arts and Technology Education Fund. When George Ripsum passed away, there was quite a number of people that made donations in his memory for the Arts and Technology Education Fund Committee. That was the only way we knew at that point who was donating money. Most of the people that do donate through their tax check-offs are anonymous, so I would like to take this opportunity to thank all those people. Anyone that has made any type of donation, we even had to try to have people round up their tax bill. So if you even donated a quarter or a dollar, that does add up over a period of time. So, again, you know, we have also an accountability. So if somebody has made an application and received funds in the past, before they can do it again, they have to submit a project summary sheet. That way, then, we're accountable to the taxpayers that we know where their funds went. And we wanted to make sure that people understand that. There's another way that people can also donate. We have like a staff appreciation program. So there's a limited amount of money that a teacher can receive, and if some individual parent wanted to honor a teacher, they are welcome to donate money in that teacher's name. We let the teacher know where the money came from, and we send the thank you note to the person that has donated that money. So, again, the application's deadline is March 31st, so everybody only has a week left, but you do have all the time in the world, as far as we know, to make donations. So, does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can do the other public service.
Next. We have an announcement regarding Chelmsford Town Elections that will be held on April 1st. People may vote in person on Election Day or via mail and ballot, and there is no early voting for town elections. The last day to request a mail-in ballot is March 25th at 5:00 p.m. For other questions, you can reach out to the Town Clerk's Office, 978-250-5202. Next, we have an announcement from the Mass Department of Transportation. This is an update. They are holding a meeting to update the public about upcoming work related to the Chelmsford Lowell Bridge Replacement Project. This project will replace two bridges in the town of Chelmsford, including Westford Street over 495 in Chelmsford and Route 3A over 495 on the Chelmsford Line. The meeting is going to be Wednesday, September, or Wednesday, March 26th at 6:00 p.m. It's at the Police Training Room at 2 Old North Road in Chelmsford. Questions can also be emailed to chelmsfordlowellbridges@dotstate dot ma dot us. Next, from the Department of Environmental Protection, we have a public notice regarding a non-major plan application and the DEP's decision or their proposed decision regarding an application for W.J. Graves Construction Company at 80 Ledge Road in Westford, Massachusetts. The application and DEP's proposed decision are available on the EEA ePlace Public Access Portal, and the administrative record is also available for inspection at their office. Comments on the proposed decision must be submitted in writing by April 3rd, 2025, and they may be submitted via the Public Access Portal or via electronic mail to And lastly, we have an announcement from the Chelmsford Minutemen Company. They invite the public to join them for their 14th and final Patriots' Day March from Chelmsford to Concord. This is the 250th anniversary, reliving the fateful day of April 19, 1775, that thrust the colonies into the start of the American Revolution. The Minutemen will be in full outfit, complete with muskets and accoutrements outfitted like our town sirens were in 1775. And scouts will receive the rare Chelmsford Trail to Concord Patch. This is being held Patriots' Day, Saturday, April 19th. The step-off is at 4:00 a.m. from the Chelmsford Common, and it ends at Minutemen National Park, Old North Bridge in Concord. And walkers are responsible for their own transportation back to Chelmsford. For more information, you can contact John Greenwood at sixmiddlesex@gmail.com.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is our general public input section of the meeting. Is there anybody in the room that would like to address the board about anything at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, we do have somebody on Zoom who wants to address the board this evening.
Okay, if you would, we ask that you identify yourself, and you have three minutes to state your comment.
She's here for a license hearing. It's not her.
Good evening. I'm Darlene Luthner. I'm the town accountant for the town of Chelmsford. I just wanted to take an opportunity, I'm sorry I couldn't be there with you guys in person, I'm just wrapping up my little vacation that I took down to Florida. I'll be heading back, be back in the office on Thursday, but I just wanted to take a brief, just a brief moment to wish George and Virginia the best of luck. I just wanted to take the opportunity to express my heartfelt gratitude for your dedication to the town of Chelmsford and your unwavering support for me always in my accounting department. It's been truly invaluable, and it's been my pleasure to work with such wonderful and professional individuals. Your commitment and your hard work has made such significant impact to the town, and I'm grateful for everything you've done. And I just want to wish you guys both best for your future endeavor, and I just want to thank you again for, again, always supporting us, for your generosity and your thoughtfulness. So I just want to say good luck to both of you, you'll be missed. My phone is always open, my door is always open. I hope to see you guys come in and visit, and if you have anything you need from me, feel free to just come and see me. But I want to thank you guys a lot. I really appreciate everything, and I'll miss you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you. Okay, there's nobody else on Zoom? Okay. All right, we'll go now to committee vacancies.
The following boards and committees have vacancies as of March 24th, 2025. The Agricultural Commission, the Board of Assessors, the CCA Town Hall Advisory Committee, the Commission on Disabilities, the Council on Aging Board, the Conservation Commission, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, the Historic District Commission, the Holiday Decorating Committee, the Parade Committee, and the Recycling Committee. If you are interested in serving on a town border committee, please complete an online application available on the town website, or you can contact the Town Manager's Office for more information at 978-250-5202.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first up, we have a transfer of an auto dealer license to licenses, auto dealer license from Speed Motors to First Car doing business at Sky Motors at 103 Tingsborough Road. Is that who we have on?
Yeah, Gabrielle is on the Zoom this evening.
Okay. So if you want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Gabriel, sorry. Sorry, geez. Put my glasses on.
So, yeah, I'm starting a car dealership here in Chelmsford. I used to work for the previous dealership that was here for four years, so I know how the business worked here. I know about the customers, what they're looking for in the city. And, yeah, I come in to like, to sell good cars for good customers and do good deals in the city of Chelmsford.
Okay. I just have a question, Paul, about what's in our packet. We have the license that was issued for 2024, but we didn't get one for 2025. Was this renewed for 2025?
Yes, it was renewed, and there's no modification to the current operations that are out there.
Okay. All right. And you're going to keep the same number of vehicles as is there now for sale, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That was my question, because it says, it says on the previous license, there's a restriction of nine vehicles for sale. And then when I look at the layout of the lot, I don't, I'm not sure what I'm, are those yellow highlights where the new vehicles for sale are going to be, or?
Yes, I gotta...
Because that's more, that's more than nine spots.
Yes, we have more than nine spots, but I have a spot for the customer too.
Okay.
Vehicles for sale, I'm gonna keep only nine.
Okay. Is that stated somewhere in here?
Yeah, it does say on the license limit of nine vehicles.
Okay, because so we're just transferring the existing license? Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay. We can take a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the auto dealer license from Speed Motors, Inc. to First Car, Inc., DBA Sky Motors at 103 Tingsborough Road, as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so we'll do a roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm aye, 5-0. Okay, good luck with your new business.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a one-day beer and wine license for Kevin Mabaka at 115 Middlesex Street.
Linda's on the phone, the Zoom this evening. Good evening, Linda.
Unmute.
No, Pat's there, but there was...
She's muted.
You gotta unmute.
Yep. Good evening, everyone.
Okay, so you want to tell us a little bit about your event?
Yes, so on the, on April 12th, my daughter will be turning 10, and I will be turning 37 on the 20th of April. So we're making a joint birthday celebration for me and my daughter, and we'll be using the St. John's Hall. So there will be adults and kids there. So alcohol will be served in the, in the event. So that's why we need a license to be able to issue the alcohol to the adults who want to take some alcohol.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the upper part?
No.
No.
Okay, apparently not, so we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day beer and wine license for Kevin Mabaka, oh, sorry, Kelvin Mabaka at 115 Middlesex Street for April 12th, 2025, as presented.
Second?
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm aye. So good luck with your event, and happy birthday to both of you.
Thank you so much. Bye, everyone, thank you. Bye, Siri.
Okay, next up, we have approval of the Order of Layout and Plan for the Extension of Woodbine Street as a public way.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The last meeting you voted you intend to do the layout. Since then, that notice was sent to the Planning Board. The Planning Board unanimously recommended the approval of the layout. So this evening, you vote to do the layout. We then file that with the Town Clerk's Office, and then the final step will be town meeting approval, we hope, for the acceptance of the extension to Woodbine Street. So the motion this evening is to approve the layout of Woodbine Street as presented.
Okay, does anybody have any questions before we take a vote on this?
No.
Okay, apparently not, so we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the layout and plan for the extension to Woodbine Street as a public way, as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm aye, 5-0. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. We have an appointment to the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. I have, I have, I do not know this person, but it looks like they have some related experience. Anybody have any questions, concerns about the appointment?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Priya Aswar to the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee for an unexpired three-year term ending June 30th, 2027, as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm aye, 5-0. Okay, Town Manager Bit Awards.
Yeah, real briefly this evening, Madam Chair, we have four DPW bid awards pertaining to traffic marking and asphalt paving. The first one is for traffic markings. There were three proposals submitted for the bid solicitation, seeking the board's confirmation to award the contract to Traffic to Pro Finish Lines Corporation of Plymouth, Mass. in the amount of $107,150, which was the low bid and low qualified bid of the three bids submitted. And again, the references checked out fine. And you want me to go through all four?
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is for Hut Mix Asphalt Birm Application. There were, again, three bids in this solicitation that were received, seeking the board's confirmation to award the lowest bid, which is the lowest qualified bid, to CVD Paving Corporation of Saugus, Mass. in the amount of $28,820. The next one is for supply of Hut Mix Asphalt. One bid was received here from Wholesome on Oak Street in Chelmsford in the amount of $40,470. And then the final was for a miscellaneous Hut Mix Asphalt paving. There were two bids submitted for that proposal, recommendation is to the low bid, the low qualified bid, Allied Paving Corporation of Gene Ave. in Chelmsford in the amount of $87,800. And again, the DPW has either done work with the latter two companies or has positive references for the initial two. And so again, the DPW Director and I seek your confirmation of this bid award.
It's encouraging to see that most of them were below budgeted amounts.
Yes, yes.
Definitely.
Good sign.
Good to see. Anybody have any questions about any of these bid awards?
Yeah, Paul, getting just one bid on the second to the last one, the supply of Hut Mix Asphalt, that's not an issue for...
No, we, no, we solicited, we were kind of puzzled as to why there was only the one bid mix and, and again, but again, we have direct experience with them, and it's a good price based on past, and we have no concerns with their performance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a motion.
Can I just bundle them all together? Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the Town Manager Bit Awards as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm aye, thank you. Okay, Town Manager reports.
Brief report this evening, two matters. One is, the first one has to do with remote, the legislature's extension of remote meeting participation. This was, again, a COVID-era law that has been extended twice previously by the legislature. It's, the current law is due to expire at the end of this month, on 31st. At this point in time, the legislature has enacted an extension till, for two additional years, till June 30th of 2027, and it's sitting on the governor's desk, and the expectation is the governor will sign it by this Thursday. So I know there's been some concern in the municipal community of the expiration, and in this time, the legislature acted in timely manner before the current law authorization expires, and the hope is that they'll, at some point soon, they will get to making the law a permanent resolution. But the good news is, it appears that the remote participation authorization will be extended until, again, just over two years, till June 30th of 2027. And then the other matter of my report this evening is the monthly double poll report from National Grid. The double poll count at this month's time is 60 double polls. The important thing to note is that 40 of them are in the hands of Comcast, and therefore they should be acted upon soon. Really, what's happened, if you look at the data they provided to you, not much went on in January and February because of the snow season, particularly in February, but now that the snow has melted, the snowbanks are gone, and it's safer to them to be out there, we expect that, again, this number will return down to the 20s next month. But as you may recall, last month, when we had that jump back up, which is where we are now, it was due to a National Grid project. Most notably, as National Grid has completed its work, once Comcast completes its work, it'll go to Verizon, and then the work should be, you know. So we're hopeful that either this April 1st report or certainly by the May 1st report will be back down to the 20 count. That's my report for this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay, any questions on either of those reports?
No.
Okay. Onto meeting minutes. We have one set of minutes from March 10th, 2025. Anybody have any comments, corrections, concerns?
I'm just noticing in the policy discussion for Town Council appointment, it's got, oh no, I'm sorry, I misread the vote. Forget it.
Okay, so we're all set?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the Select Board from March 10th, 2025, as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm aye, 5-0. Thank you. Okay. We are already down to Select Board liaison reports and referrals. Start with Pat. Do you have anything?
Yeah, just an update on Mass School Building Authority and the Parkin Middle School, Colonel Moses Parkin Elementary, well, I said elementary school, it's a middle school. Anyway, the Subcommittee has met a couple of times recently to review responses to our requests for proposals for owners, project managers. We received, I believe, 11 proposals, and we shotlisted that group to four entities. We usually stick with three, but we had some pretty good response, and we wanted to do the fourth one. So after a long meeting last Wednesday, each one of them came in and were able to present for an hour. The Subcommittee landed on a company called Left Field, OPM Management Services. So our next steps on that will be to have a large meeting of the entire school building committee sometime in the next couple of weeks. We're expecting maybe April 9th is what the poll was out today, so just waiting for all the members to get back to see what time is best to meet on that. Once we meet with the entire group and get the full vote by the group for Left Field, then that will allow us to go ahead and move the process along to a meeting, an actual meeting with MSBA on April 16th, and in hopes of getting this group approved, and with approval on it around the April 16th, that will allow us to go ahead and move on to the architect selection process, which will be about as long as this one was, but we hope to have an architect onboard mid to late summer at the latest. Hopefully, it's more midsummer, and that will let us get going and really start doing the work of the committee. So we're excited to be at this point, and we have, upon approval from MSBA, we will have our OPM onboard. we will have our OPM onboard and then be looking for the architect. And so exciting times to come. But, but I want to just make a point to mention this project every single meeting that we can, just for no other reason than to, to get it out in the public eye and let them see what we're doing. This, this particular group that we hired came in very strongly on their marketing programs as well as their construction side. So we're very comfortable with them. They seem to have a great marketing program, which should really help us get the word out to the community with several, you know, visioning types of meetings as well as public input and those types of things. So exciting to be finally moving along and hope to move it along in an expeditious manner with the MSBA. So that's that. And then the only other thing I have is I'd like to wish George and Virginia all the best and thank them for their service for all the years. I have a lot of respect for anybody willing to step up and, and put up with the rigors of serving town government. So George and Virginia, I appreciate you, and I appreciate the hard work that you put in, and best of luck in all your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Okay, Erin, you're next.
I just want to repeat what Pat said and thank George and Virginia for their time and for their, their help and their, their assistance. Their, the last couple of years on the board, they've been very, very helpful for me in learning. So thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things. On Saturday, I attended a volunteer fair with Paul and Virginia, and we had a volunteer recognition to, for three folks who have, who have spent a lot of time volunteering for the town. Tom Gazda, who was a founding member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. He stepped down last summer. He made, he did a lot for that committee, and it still bears his imprint. Louise Myers, who spent 20 years on the Council on Aging Board, also a very involved and intense person, did a lot with AARP, with the state legislature, and many other organizations, too many to mention. She was on for, on that committee for 20 years. And Carol Dismaris, who was a volunteer, just a resident volunteer at the, at the library. She has spent almost 30 years coming in twice a week to work at the library. When I was talking to her before the, the little dedication, the celebration, she, she said, she's, you know, I think I've been there about 12 years now. And I said, no, Carol, it's been more than twice that. So, so she obviously enjoys what she's doing. Also, yesterday, I attended a ceremony at the Elks for the induction of their new officers. And the new exalted ruler is John Mason, so congratulations to John. I also want to thank folks that are on elected boards in town that have decided not to run for reelection, including two on, on this, at this table. But I also want to thank Mike Walsh from the Planning Board and Denise Michael Ralph from the Chelmsford Housing Authority. They, you know, it, it takes a lot to, to run for an elected position in town. And with that, I'm going to give the two leaving, members that are leaving this board, the last word. So beginning with Virginia.
Thank you. I have a couple liaison reports. The Vinyl Square Committee has been tracking the treatment of Freeman Lake, and they just wanted me to help convey that Courtney Thompson, the town stormwater engineer, is having a meeting at 10 o'clock tomorrow with Water and Wetland. That's the company that's going to come in to do some of the critical spot treatments. And she's opening that meeting up to anybody who has questions to ask them. So if you are interested in joining that, you can contact Courtney directly and get the link from her. The Finance Committee meeting is meeting this Thursday. They're going to conclude their reviews of the town warrant articles and the budget audits. And they'll also be voting on the town meeting warrant article recommendations on Thursday. The Council on Aging Board, Bob Schneider, the chair, asked me to just share that the board recently reviewed an acoustic study that they worked with the Senior Center on Getting Together that had a different analysis of the acoustics in different parts of the Senior Center, showed a lot of what we knew already, especially with the large room, that there's room for improvements. And I believe it's their intent to work with the Senior Center Director and with the town to maybe get another level of fidelity and get some ideas of what would it take to actually implement some of the priority recommendations. And then the Conservation Commission hasn't, the last changes to their bylaws were in 2009. So they are likely going to establish a subcommittee to start reviewing the current bylaws and making any applicable updates that they feel should be made to that. So they just wanted the public to know that. And my last thing is, I just want to thank my board members and thank the public for the opportunity to serve. It's really been a great privilege. And I encourage anybody who has interest in doing it to seriously consider. And moreover, I want to thank George for his bazillion years of service to the town. It's, it's been a privilege for the town to have you serve for that long. So thank you, and thank you for your years of dedication.
Thank you.
All right, George, now you really get the last word.
It's not like me, is it? I don't know where to begin, but it's, it's a tough night for me because it's been here, it seems like an eternity, and it's, it's been a lot of fun. I thank Paul and the staff, the rest of the board, and all the other people that I've worked with on the boards. I mean, there's been, you know, times when people didn't agree, and there's been people, but we all seem to work out our situations when we didn't agree, and, you know, everybody part of friends. And it's, it's been a great run, and it really has. I thank all the people who have worked on so many committees and all the department heads and their helpers and all the volunteers in town. And, I mean, I love the town, I love the people. People are always helping. The police department, the fire department, they're great. And it's been an honor to serve with so many dedicated people. I'd just like to thank my family, especially my two children. Children, yeah. Not really children, but, you know, after my wife passed, it was hard for them to take over and try to teach a 78-year-old guy how to, who doesn't know how to boil water, you know what I mean, how to survive. So I give them a lot, a lot of credit and a lot of love. So God was blessed, I was blessed. But I just want to say good luck to everybody, and God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
George, would you like to adjourn? Would you like to make the motion?
Can we do one more thing before we adjourn? In the spirit of thanks, I have a plaque here for our chair. Just keep going with all the thanks today to commemorate your year of service as the chair of the board. So thank you for your service to the board and to the town.
Congratulations.
And you're on again, George. All the thanks.
Yeah.
George, you want to, do you want to make the motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn and thank you, everybody.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote. Pat?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
I'm aye. All right, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.